Start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still want to sing the flag of America? Alright, please silence your cell phones. Or electronic devices that make noise. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, no, there are not, Adam Chair.
Then I would consider a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Visitor comments? Vast amount of people here this evening. Thank you for coming. Empty chair. Alright, move on to the consent agenda. Consider the meeting minutes from the prior monthly meeting. Consider the monthly cash flow, including investments. Monthly bills paid. Monthly bills paid in the activities accounts. The donations.
You have them? You want me to mention them?
Oh, I had them up, but then I.
I can read them if you want.
That would be fabulous.
I have a donation from Pillsbury Players for one thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, Lions Club for a thousand dollars to the fishing team. Um, the, the Pillsbury Players was for the Grease Backdrops. And Initiative Foundation for five hundred dollars. Woodworking for kids. And another one for six hundred dollars for the, uh, author workshop from Initiative Foundation. Thousand dollars for the weight room update and thousand dollars for the book vending machine, all from Initiative Foundation. That foundation.
And thirty-five hundred for the Pillager Booster Club.
I don't have.
And two hundred dollars from the Pillager Booster Club.
Okay, I don't have that sheet.
Okay.
I must not have got one. Thank you for catching that. I didn't have that sheet.
I wrote the check, so I really.
Are they on the sheet?
They are, I did hear, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I must not have made that copy of the page.
Okay, thank you to all those, uh, that donated. The personnel summary sheet also is enclosed in the consent agenda, so I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Awesome. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
I'd like to mention resignation from Adam T H from choir. He's been with us, our music, been with us for over twelve years, so just like to wish him the best.
Wish him well. Thank you for his service to our school. Special board reports with possible action. Start with personnel. We did not meet. So unless you have something else, we'll move on to curriculum.
What do you have to do for that?
Curriculum.
Curriculum, we met May eighteenth, and Ryan's going to give us a scoop of updates.
And I think we talked about that last time at the last working.
Didn't we meet the fifteenth for the board?
We had, we had a curriculum meeting and then we had a D L T meeting couple for the week after that.
And then we met after.
Ah, that's correct, yeah. So at the last curriculum committee meeting, we reviewed, um, STAR data, looking at that information. Talked a little bit about going into the D L T meeting. We had STAR data and then we also had, uh, at the D L T, I did hand out the M C A data as well that is embargoed now. If it's an invited meeting, we can still share that information. It will become unembargoed end of July into August. And we talked a little bit about curricular pieces over the summer and some of the work that we're doing. In terms of curriculum writing, earth science is the bigger area that we're working on right now, and then also fifth and sixth grade. Our school within a school, those teams are getting together over the summer as well. I've talked about it a couple of different times, but our letters, uh, professional talent, that all of the elementary teachers are enrolled in and are actually starting over the summer. In addition, I put a report together for this month too, just to kind of a quicker turnaround, but summer school update. Summer school is up and running and we had a really great first week. Everything is just working as well. I gave kind of, uh, summer camps. I don't think I shared that with you guys last time, so I'll put that in here as well. So you can see the camps that we have in these months, two, three. The camps are both attended by summer school students and also families that registered this year. Technology update that I put on there, um, we've had Blocksi for the last three years for our student devices. Blocksi is a device that does internet filtering outside of the building. So we have filtering no matter what, um, on our, on the district's internet. But when you're at home, for the student devices, they're also filtered as well. We are switching over to another one called Go Guardian. We're able to get a really good feel with that. And Go Guardian has some more features as well. So things that, uh, communication with parents and just some more utilization with teachers in the classroom. In terms of both the device, but then teachers can also share things out from their device to all of the student devices as well. And then in terms of teacher development, looking at some of those technology apps and expanding our knowledge around how to do stuff. So Go Guardian is obviously one of them. Clever is another one. But we talked about clever is a single user sign-on that kids use. Teachers can gain a lot from the classroom as well, using that same single user sign-on. So those are some things just kind of coming down the pipeline, as well as continued Schoology, training, and most pieces for teachers. And then I just, um, I put a little summary of the district leadership team, which I, I mentioned just a little bit ago in terms of, um, reviewing the M C A STAR data. And then, uh, we started that data dive at the D L T. So we started looking at that STAR data and the M C data, and one of the big things we asked is is to start generating questions. We did the same thing la- last year of what questions do you see as you're looking at the data as we're going through this information? And as we go through it, what does it, what gets your mind thinking of the next question? What's the data that we should dig deeper into? And that's really what led to our school within a school in the process that we've been over the last year. And so we started that same process. June and July, we will continue that data dive. And then August second, we will do a data retreat, um, with department chairs, uh, grade level team members from elementary and our admin team. Pulling together, we'll do a data retreat where we'll, um, propose goals for the next year in terms of what's the next step and what keeps us moving. And that'll come to the next D L T. And then both the D L T and then I talked about it a little bit at the curriculum committee meeting. We have a new data management system coming online, um, that we are switching over to. And I did a screenshot on the, the backside, just to kind of give you the four big categories that the dashboard will show. Our data management holds all of our testing data, all of our attendance data, all of our grade levels, our data will all flow into the same system called Prolific. And within that, it's how do we make data-driven decision-making? How do we do that on a more daily basis? Daily, weekly, monthly basis in terms of, uh, curriculum, uh, decisions that teachers make, but then also for administrators as they're looking at from the building. And so I just did a screenshot here, um, to show the categories. Know that none of those settings are on right now because we're in the middle of the summer. So if you look at behavior, we have a hundred percent of kids on track for behavior. Right? We hope that's always the case. But, um, the dashboard, um, looks at all of that information and it helps us disaggregate it as we go. So it looks at attendance. One of the questions we had a year ago was, we have an attendance goal. Do we have an attendance problem? And as we went through the year, we kept looking at the data, we said, we don't. We don't really have an attendance problem. We didn't continue that goal, right? That will be monitored as we go, right? And it looks at the last two years, it was the current year, and then the last year. And then it gives you a baseline to start from as well. So it's, it's a constantly monitored thing. So that we can look at and say, okay, what's going on? Why do we have this gap right now? Why is it different from last year? What happened? Screening as well. When we think about literacy, when we, especially at the elementary level, when we think about the number of kids we have on track, if we're looking at those screening pieces, how many kids are we, are not on track right now? And as that data comes in, as teachers enter the data, it's instantly added to the system. Where before we had to have it processed, it had to go to the region, and then it got added into our system. This moment the teacher puts it in, it's available. In addition to behavior, as I mentioned, um, so we track behavior as well in, as incident happens, it is entered into J M C, that will come into the system as well. So we will look at those degrees of, of behavior and look at, is it matching the certain time of the year? Are we in the middle of December and all of a sudden we see behaviors spike? We may have a reason for that. So the, this dashboard will be available for elementary, middle, and high school. And then, um, in addition to the high school, we are working on a career dashboard as well, which is a redefining ready metrics, looking at how many kids are involved in internships, scholarships, involved with some sort of work experience that are in C I S, that are in P S E O. That dashboard is in development right now. And hopefully we'll, by fall, we'll actually be up and running. A little preview to Prolific, and we will start using it more and more as we come online into this next school year. Any questions about Prolific or any of that information?
So your saying G M C actually talks to Prolific?
It does. Yeah, so Prolific talks to all of our testing. It talks to the state of Minnesota in terms of M C A, STAR tests, J M C, it actually talks to Schoology as well. And it pulls all of that information into one system. And so as a teacher, a teacher will have a dashboard as well for their classroom. And so their kids will, you know, their classroom of kids would be rostered away, and if you click on a kid, it'll show that trend for the kid. Prolific was built, um, for intervention was its initial process or product. And so within that, when we talk about intervention like ADSAS, uh, Title I and those pieces, we actually were able to mark in there that a student is getting this intervention. And what, what we look at in child studies for six weeks, we'll do that intervention. We will look at benchmark during that six weeks. Did that intervention have an impact? If it didn't, then we go on to the next intervention. And then that looks at the next process or the next step into, does that kid go from, uh, that student assessment team to child study, special education process based off of that tracking of the trend? So it's pretty cool. It's a pretty cool system in terms of what it can do. Uh, right now, we are, we are doing all the front-loading work of getting it ready and putting our interventions in, putting our data and linking that together. And then it links nightly. It comes in on a nightly basis.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else from curriculum?
No.
Alright, let's move on to policy.
This policy committee did meet just prior to this meeting. So you have some action items on the handbooks. And, um, you guys have all gotten the handbooks. The change, a lot of the changes that were made, um, were made, are all in red, um, in their copies. The majority of the changes were updating, updatest, um, past twenty twenty-three, the different things. There's some mail pages that, uh, the breakfast and lunch program is now free, so that was changed. Um, and then also they took away the technology handbook and, and just put it right in to the actual, um, secondary handbook. So that was in there as well. And then the other thing to note is, um, under disciplinary, um, the wording has changed to non-exclusionary. If a student got disciplined and they needed to be out of school for ten days, let's say, or whatever, non-disc, non-exclusionary, they can still be doing their schoolwork at home now, just like if they were on vacation. So they changed the wording from all assess to non-exclusionary.
So what's the point of suspension?
You can still do it if, if it was harm to the student or to a teacher, but you have to go through different steps. Schools would just send kids home for suspension. So there's other steps that you have to do first to prove that. State statute.
I, yeah, I didn't think it was just us. I just, my point was to have a suspension on that.
Also gifted and talented.
Oh, and the gifted and talented program also, the, there used to be a separate handbook for that, and now that is just within the secondary and elementary handbooks. And then the activities handbook, um, we did update and put in the changes from the four policy four twelve that we have the third reading up to date on the state and national expenses. And then, um, updated at the end, the rotation for uniforms. All they've all got theirs this year, and so they've got, now they will be the twenty eighth, twenty ninth rotation. Any questions?
Well, let's start with the motions.
Yep.
We're gonna start with which handbook you want to start with.
So.
On the thing of the activities. It's up to you.
To make a motion to approve the activity handbook for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Now, any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We would like to make a motion to approve the elementary handbook twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
We did notice a typo that will be fixed.
Thank you. I had a wording thing.
In the formatting role.
The formatting and the page numbers will be correct as well.
We're gonna switch it to Guardian. It all has to say Guardian and not go back and forth.
Josh gave me a thumbs up on that.
That's, yeah, it's my only thing, consistency in wording. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to not say what my issue is, but they're all gonna call me later and ask me what I'm answering my whole question.
I would like to make a motion to approve the secondary handbook for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And this is the third reading of poli- policy four twelve, which is the expense for re- re- re-.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
And then just one more comment under policy on your tables. You two have this sheet of all of these policies that we will be holding another policy meeting because there are some policies, from the legislature that we do need to approve, um, in July, some in August, and then some prior to January. Which, Mr. Bonberg, will give us a list of which ones have to be more timely than the rest.
It's a great time of policy. No.
Also, is there also the annual update of the three? Did you mention that?
Oh, yes. So, and then there is an annual review that we did look at. Policy five oh six, student discipline, policy seven twenty-two, public data request and public, and policy eight oh six, which is crisis management. Those are required by law to be, to be approved each year. So we are going to make sure they are on the agenda for July because they are also listed on the sheet that there is changes, so we need to make sure that we get changes and they, we will be doing the readings of them in July. And some of these policies will only require one reading. I don't know what you're talking about.
But we're good.
Okay.
Awesome. Anything else from policy?
Hey, listen.
I don't know. I, no, that was pretty quick.
How many pages I gotta go through?
Let's go with activities.
I love being a part of these parties.
Activities did not meet. Looks like you have a meeting coming up.
Yeah, Friday.
Alright, what about facilities?
We did not meet. I'll give you an update on, uh, what everybody's concerned with.
I was gonna say, can you make that announcement?
Well, from all the emails and texts and people calling you guys and me, um, the, uh.
And the dead trains.
The, um, yeah. The boring company, boring company was here today to go underneath the trap. That was the main problem. The irrigation has been broken from the, putting up the bleachers. We set up a temporary line a week ago, so they've been trying to water, but obviously when it's ninety degrees for twelve days, you're doing all that by hand, so Todd and Phil are moving those things around for the last week and a half. It doesn't keep up when it's ninety degrees and we can't do all the areas that have been damaged with. Because when the main line gets broken, it can't go to every other spot. That boring company was there today, so they went underneath, so our irrigation guy should be working on those zones this week. Hopefully that gets up and, and running soon. The Anderson Brothers was here this week finishing, uh, some of their leveling and dirt work around the complex area. They will be tarring the main road this week, and then after the irrigation gets done, it'll be sodded and seeded. So we aren't gonna do that until, on the, the field work until irrigation works, because then it doesn't make sense to do all that work until everything's done. Dugout work, I have a meeting tomorrow with Norsan. They are going to start doing the dugout replacement and some of those things here shortly as well, so. Hopefully within the next two, three, four weeks, it'll all be good and done, and the trees we know are dead. They are replacing them. They were only under warranty for one year, so of course, uh, it's past the year, so we will be replacing some of those out of our own budget. So that's what I know. And I'd like to thank the landscaping class for some, some work that they did out on the islands. They put some butches in and some wood chips, and those are irrigated, so they'll look nice. Those little islands, so those are working. And the zones over here are working. And those zones aren't right now. And of course, things turn brown and it'll come back. We have two months, so we'll be fine. Just temporary right now. It won't be the way it looks usually, so.
Thank you.
Always something.
Move on to budget.
Budget did meet. We met on June seventh. Um, we went through a litany of stuff. We went over the special ed funding. This year it's a point two. Looks like it's gonna be a point four at some point in time in the next few years. Is that two years, Mike?
I'm sorry, what was that?
For the funding for the special ed, is that point four?
Forty-four percent.
Forty-four percent, yeah.
That's pretty much for the next few years, but at some point it has to be, yeah.
Yep. So that was it for the special ed funding. Then we went through the capital line item budget. Which I can get a copy if you guys need, but it's ice rink, warming house, district office homework, um, speakers for the softball and baseball field. Discus area upgrade was twenty thousand. Water fountain at, at athletic complex. We budgeted two thousand. Come to find out it's seven thousand.
Oh, wow, they went horrible.
So.
Seventy-four hundred.
Wow. That's quite a lot, but.
For one, for one waterfall.
For one waterfall.
One waterfall.
That's one very.
So we're looking at where we can fit that into the budget.
Just get like a.
Hard knocks.
It's like in the closet.
Um, then we got building projects, those baseball softball projects at forty thousand. Um, your typical furniture and equipment, technology, high school lockers, update weight room equipment, floor scrubbers, tables, baseball mound tarps, classroom room chairs, stools, marker desk, and rug for fifth, fifth section of second grade. Fifth grade instru- instruments for class. Blinds for kindergarten room. Pit cover and standard for track, standards for track. Then we looked at new curriculum for the elementary, middle school, and high school. We got budgeted. L T F M, kitchen ceiling tiles will be done, uh, baseball softball field, um, entry carpets, entry or early childhood middle school. Your normal wear and tear, your normal maintenance, um, early childhood drinking fountain. Which, again, that was cheaper, but we still only budgeted two thousand for that and came in at five. Track surface repair and repainting. So we went over through that to get it into the line and get into the budget. Then we went through the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four line item budget. It's a lot of pages. So we went through it and it all flows through into the report that Missy will present in a little bit. I'm gonna hold off on that one. Uh, we went through the fundraiser recaps of all the fundraising that was done throughout the year, and how much was raised compared to what was the fundraising goal. Um, looks like most of them were higher on the actual raise than the fundraising goal.
Which one, which one was the best?
I would bet on grocery begging on butter breaks. Although butter breaks costs a lot.
Well, that, yeah. It says the installation of the music garden for the elementary student council with I S one, but percentage-wise, yeah, it looks like it's pretty close to I S one as well.
Yeah, butter breaks was low.
Yeah.
They threw it together this year, but.
Very low.
Uh, Benson's grocery begging was almost twenty-nine hundred dollars more, so. So grocery begging is the way to go if you're gonna fundraise.
They had cookies, the cookie dough.
Oh, yeah, it's sixth grade cookie dough.
Boy, that's fifty-four hundred above their goal.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
The top one.
Yep, I didn't even look at the top one. So no, that's the highest one. Good job, sixth grade.
Good job, sixth grade.
Fifty-four hundred above some what they were planning on doing. Good job for them. Um, then we went through the E S R funds. The only, basically the bit, what we spent, what we haven't spent, um, we did get an extension on the E S R funding. Um, and has been extended to be able to spend by September of twenty twenty-four. So we got another full year off that for the E S R. Okay? And then, if you guys want me to go through line by line on all the legislative stuff. Or if you guys just want a copy.
I gave them the copy.
Please request one.
Yeah, I, I like how it goes by about a hundred bucks, that it's millions of dollars, a hundred bucks per student. Yeah, I, I like how it goes by about a hundred bucks, that it's millions of dollars, a hundred bucks per student, but it's like millions of dollars it's gonna cost to put all this stuff in.
Correct, it's great, so. A lot of the legislators were busy, and we have a lot of stuff we have to look at, so going, going forward. And then, uh, before we get to Missy and her budget update, I am gonna have, turn this one over to Mike so he can explain it a little bit more better than I can on the benefits of Amara's being tied with the business.
I'll have Missy do that.
There you go, even better. And other than that, that was it for our committee review. Yep, but, so it's Missy's now?
Get you started and get your screen out?
Alright, so all of you should have a packet of front review for the budget book for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. The first couple pages are just informational. It has the list of school board members and the administration team. Then we have the highlights of the official budget for next school year. So the biggest adjustments to revenue are going to be that we projected a, we are going to get a four percent for gym ed revenue increase compared to a normal two percent, which is normally what we get. Uh, we adjusted the APUs to thirteen eighty-eight based on our numbers at the end of the school year and dropping the smaller senior class off and adding in our increased number of kindergarteners.
Is that where we were at the end of the year? It's close to thirteen eighty-eight?
We were thirteen seventy.
Thirteen seventy-two.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're thirteen seventeen.
Thinking we were still in the twelves, so, okay.
Well, the APU is a little, it's adjusted.
Yeah.
Yep, it's not actual heads.
Okay.
Yep. But my kiddo is from seven to twelve.
Get more.
Accounted at one point two. Yep.
So we probably are close to twelve.
Yeah.
Yes.
In rumor wise, I think we ended at about twelve.
Four sixty-four.
Twelve sixty-four.
Okay, that's close to where I was thinking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Alright, and then as far as expenditures go, the biggest changes from this last school year were the estimated health insurance. We estimated fifteen percent originally. And then we just went through the hit a bit this spring, and the best bid that we took was sixteen point three percent, so I went back and adjusted that. And that's a change from, even from when we met. So I went back and adjusted it to one point three percent more. Um, the next one would be our teacher salary roll up, so an increase of two percent in the formula there, and then steps and length changes. So that gives us, the unassigned fan- fund balance for twenty-one, twenty-two was at eleven point nine five percent. Um, you're not gonna see twenty-two, twenty-three until we go through audit this summer, and I give you actual numbers this fall. So my projected fund balance at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four is about fifteen point nine percent. And as of today, our line item is at fifty thousand to the good. And that's including forty thousand more that we're gonna pay out for the athletic complex next school year, and we still have about thirty thousand that needs to be paid out in the referendum project for rookie. And as far as the other funds go, food service, I just updated the expenditures and revenues. As we said earlier, breakfast and lunch is gonna be free for all the students in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, community ed, same thing, just updated expenditures and revenues. And then the building construction fund, we just chatted about with the athletic complex, about forty thousand into this next school year, and then wrapping up that twenty-twenty referendum project for about thirty thousand. Alright, then the next page, we're gonna get into the numbers. So, as of today, with the best reports that I have currently, uh, we are anticipating about sixteen point six in revenue. And you can see in my pie chart below that's equals about eighty-five percent in state aids, fourteen percent in levy, and one percent in federal aids. And you'll see that the federal aid did go down about four hundred thousand from the previous year because of that ESR funding. We won't have uh, we're estimating about sixty thousand that I'm gonna be rolling into next year, so. Okay, so expenditures. So this first one, so remember we split it out in two different ways to give you two different ways of data. So the first one is by program code. So we have administration, the district support, the elementary and secondary teachers, vocationals, ed ed, special ed, instructional support, pupil support, sites and buildings, and then any other fixed costs. For a total of sixteen point nine. And then you'll see in the chart below how that's allocated out between each department. And then the next page is just split by the object code. So again, it's just how it's reported to the state. So, in this chart, I include salaries and benefits together. And then we have purchase services, supplies and materials, capital expenditures, and then any other expense for sixteen, seven. And then again, you can see on the chart how that kind of all flows together there. Alright, food service. So, this is the food service revenue. So we got, this is based on our numbers for this last school year, so we got about two hundred and ninety-two, or we're expecting two hundred and ninety-two for state aids for next year. Seven hundred and sixty-four thousand in federal, and then about forty-nine hundred for pupils. Because again, we, that's gonna be down because they have free breakfast and lunch, so we're not gonna have as many people paying on accounts unless it's for extras. Extra milks, extra ala cards. So that breaks down to about seventy-two percent in federal aid, and then tw- twenty-eight percent for the state aid. And then for food service expenditures, we have about twenty-nine thousand in salaries, twelve thousand in employee benefits. The five hundred and ninety-six thousand is for purchase service, purchase services, which is our avions. Eighty-seven fifty in supplies and materials, and then five thousand in capital expenditures, and then thirty-two hundred in other expenses. And you can see that go down in the chart as well. Alright, community service fund revenue. We are anticipating about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand in local revenues. Seventy-five eight in state aids, for a total of four oh four nine for revenues for community ed, which is about eighty-one percent for local revenue and nineteen percent in state aids. And then as far as the expenditures go, we're predicting about three hundred and thirty-four thousand in expenditures. So a hundred and eighty-one thousand in salaries, forty-nine thousand in benefits, seventy-eight six in purchase services, and then the twenty-four thousand in supplies with five hundred dollars in other expenses. And on the back, it's just kind of a summary page and a little bit of history on our district and what's to come. Um, are there any questions on any of the revenues or the expenditures?
Under the food service, the salaries are at twenty-nine thousand.
That's district people.
Yeah.
That doesn't include avions. That's in the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Thank you.
We have one person, we can quote a few things that district people helped.
I figured it was a coding thing. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
But if you look at that food service, it's still gonna look like it's gonna go up. Yeah, some between, we're gonna generate some more revenue, which remember we always have to spend down. We tried to spend down last year with breakfast and some of those things.
When we do fancy, we already got a bougie smoothie maker. Is that thing out every day?
It was, but it's, it's, we're gonna not do it next year because the smoothie thing was not very, didn't go over very well.
Coffee.
Coffee, we tried for a little bit too.
Water fountains?
Okay.
Do you do water fountains?
Water fountains?
Some of those dollars.
Wonder if you could use that money.
Can't quote it.
Why not? You gotta have a hundred dollar store every day.
Throw some electrolytes in it.
One of the things we did do this last year was start to, we have, uh, we started to pay down some of our dollars out of, to increase the quality of the food.
Yep.
We bought some items that were a little more expensive that we would charge to that account. We probably can do that again next year depending on where we are. Can do some more other items with avions to, you know, because we have to spend down that money, even with the free breakfast. We probably won't spend down the money we had to.
My, my question with that spend down and such is, now that everything's free, if we're not making as much money, how do we eventually get the money to pay for new stoves? That's how we used to use the spend down.
Yes, and that's what they've been subsidizing with the federal aids.
Okay.
So the, the state will give us the same money, right?
There'll still be money enough for them. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's just not people paying for it, it's the state paying for it, or taxpayers.
Okay, alright, anything else, Missy?
I don't think so.
Okay, anything else from budget?
Gotta make that a motion.
Would you like to make a motion to?
To accept the budget presented by business manager, Missy Berry.
That would be beautiful. Motion by Brian and seconded by Becky. Any questions, comments, or concerns that we all just raised before them?
Exactly why I was waiting patiently.
Next time, speak up. So no more, apparently. So, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that would be the business manager's report and hidden.
Add the piece about Brian, know about the benefit of Mars type.
Yes, that was the other side of it, yes, sorry.
Um, so within the last, well, almost year and a half now, we have Ms. Lois in our office doing all of our Mars reporting in. So she actually does all the data entry, and then I take the data entry and submit it to the state, and then I get all the reports back. So with the reporting, we've noticed a few trends that we've kind of tweaked a little bit. Um, which we feel like has really benefited us and added some revenue to our pocketbook. Um, so, for example, some current enrollment, we have kiddos, we have a lot of kiddos taking CIS courses, and we get for every kiddo that takes a CIS class, we get a hundred and fifty dollars. So we're just being more consistent in tracking some of those things. Um, some of the ESY, the, so that's the extended school learning year for kiddos that are going still getting services in the summer, we still have to track and report them. Um, so just little bits of information that we are just trying to be more consistent on and working on better reporting so that we can be as accurate as we can on our system and get the most money back that we can.
Love accuracy. Beautiful.
And, and one thing too, Lois, is the, the trainings on the Mars, you have to stay up on it. And it's constantly changing, and Lois is really good about going to trainings and going to webinars, and she, she's done a great job of keeping that up, on that, because it changes all the time. If you're not willing to go to trainings and go to workshops and all that, that, that you get behind because it changes so often. And tying that with Missy, there's so many pieces that change that you miss one thing, you miss forty thousand dollars, just like that. So it's been a good tie-in, and that's, you know, when I talked to other suits in the past, there's a reason why they do that. It's because of tying it in with the business office, it made sense, so we've noticed that as well. Been good for us.
And we get a lot of weird, random situations that we have to investigate and work with MDE on to figure out how best to report them.
Yeah, it's been good.
Weird, quirky things that come up.
Good.
Good job, Missy.
Uh, update on property and liability insurance.
Did you want me to speak to that or?
Yeah, you can. You wanna start, yeah, I'll jump in if you need to.
Okay, um, so we had a bid come in from Weisenegger Angle Insurance, so Luke and I met with them last week. Um, their bid came in, and so we also had the bid from our current valor company, which we are with currently. So comparing the two for apples to apples, Weisenegger Angle came in at about a hundred thousand, so about twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-five thousand more than what Valor was at. So we are recommending to stay with Valor currently.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion on staying with Valor for property? Any questions, comments, or concerns on that?
So basically, no, there is no changes to the insurance policy in and of itself.
We, two pieces to it that we did change, um, based off of Casey Hall and our agent's recommendation. To increase the um, per square foot coverage. Um, we are seeing the bids that when schools are going out for new bids, anywhere between three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars a square foot. We, we are at two ninety right now.
Two ninety.
Um, per square foot to replace that, we're gonna go up to three ten. Um, just to get a little closer to the, if we had a major catastrophe or hurt, a tornado comes through and wipes out the whole school, we still aren't completely covered. Most schools aren't, but we're getting closer to that. Of course, two or three years from now, the bids might come back down a little bit, so we're a little closer based off of Casey's recommendation to get to that three ten. The other thing we're gonna do is change that to um, um, the uh, the ten thousand dollars from five thousand to ten thousand, the deductible. We're gonna increase that deductible a little bit just to help keep that cost down to go up to that three ten uh, per square foot coverage. You know, like for example, when we had to replace the gym floor in the elementary, it was about a hundred thousand dollar claim. We, last time we had to pay five thousand to do that. This time it would be ten thousand on a major issue like that. Um, the other thing was based off of, uh, you know, when we had Weisenberger, Weisenberger, Weisenegger, I'm Weisenberger, Weisen, I had a teacher. Weisenego, um, they felt we were over insured. Uh, he recommended that we were, we would go to two fifty or two sixty a square foot.
Wow.
Um, and then talking to Wold, our architects, and talking to Casey, that's not what they're seeing in the bid. So I, I just saw Fargo Morehead put a bid out for a school that came in at over four hundred dollars a square foot, so they nixed the project for now. So, I, I'm gonna follow Casey in what Wold said and stay with that three ten. I think that's much better for us to, you know, just to be somewhat covered. Like I said, we're not completely covered, but we're much better than we were eight years ago in local, so I would stay with Valor. That's our recommendation.
So we have a motion on the floor with a first and a second. Uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now, Pillager School.
We, we wanna talk about hit a bit too? We have, just.
Oh, they did it, yeah.
I thought we, I thought that was included in your thing.
Well, a little bit. I wanna give you a little more detail on that.
Oh.
Um.
That wasn't in our.
It wasn't in our meeting, yeah. We, we.
No, because we hadn't met yet.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Um, we went out to hit a bid. We had uh, five, five people bid us. Um, help, currently with Health Partners, they came back at eighteen percent. Medicare, Medica is at a sixteen point three. Um, there's some savings for families with Essentia that if they are with Essentia already, they'll see a little bit of reduction because of another plan that they can opt out with Essentia. Doesn't mean everybody has to do that. We recommended going to Medica, two reasons. That's with the uh, the uh, co-ops across the state. Um, they all are with Medica, other than Sourcewell. Um, so we joined that group of all this co-ops, which means now they'll have bigger members to draw when there are, next time our quote is. Uh, so hopefully that'll help keep our insurance down eventually. It doesn't mean we have to stay with them, but we've become part of a larger network of, of users um, with that Medica bid. So we'll recommend, we recommended the insurance committee, which is made up of some teachers, some admin, Missy, myself. Uh, we're gonna switch over to Medica as renewal rate at January first. So, uh, we were pretty close with that fifteen percent bid, our quote in our budget, we were a little bit off, but, um, but so we'll be switching insurance companies as of January one.
Alright, anything else from budget?
No, no, that should be it.
Okay. Pillager School promotional video presented by Chad Cool.
Uh, this is the uh, high school version that'll be on our website pertaining just to what's going on in high school, so. What makes Pillager special, um, to me is, is the family feel. I think we go out of our way to hire staff that make um, people feel that they're, they're part of something. The focus on the secondary has been really adding, um, those important vocational pieces to the, to the piece of puzzle. When I got here, they, they did already have a, a good um, college and schools program. Uh, we've, we've, that's, we've retained that, we've added to that a little bit. Um, but we really added a lot of the vocational pieces. Uh, we've added, you know, a phenomenal um, culinary arts program. Um, we, we brought in somebody that was very skilled in the construction trades. Um, we have a video production program. Um, we have a video production program and a robotics program that I mean, I'll hold up against anybody. Um, you know, those things were not here before. Um, and those, those have come to Pillager and I think they teach, um, they're, they're very, very important for our students in, in preparing them for that next step. Cause that next step isn't always college, sometimes it's a, it's a, it's vocational school, sometimes it's vocational training. Sometimes it's right into the job market. So also bringing in a work experience program where kids can go out and not bring their money outside of school walls.
How do we help kids with that career path? How do we help them make decisions on what are they gonna do after high school? And, and things, life has changed. It isn't everybody's going to a four-year school. There's two-year schools, there's apprenticeships. There's, there's a lot of opportunities for kids. What we know is that they need to graduate with some experience. They need to graduate with a job shuttle or something that gives them the opportunity to make a decision on a direction they should go. Um, they don't need to be specific. They don't need to say, I want to be this. Um, but they should have an opportunity to say, I tried this and I might like to go into the medical field, right? I like this and I might wanna go into construction. Um, so giving them more opportunities to do that, and that's what we're doing in the high school. We're looking at how do we build out more career pathways that help kids connect the dots? And it starts with freshman academy. Freshman academy is an opportunity to continue that exploration in careers. Um, they do some stuff on personal finance, they do some stuff on world cultures and, and what is the world around us? And then some health and wellness pieces as well. How do we look at keeping ourselves healthy? And so they get the opportunity to start to pick and choose those classes. They've always had those electives to pick. What we're trying to do now is give them some more ideas of what these classes will lead to these careers. And giving them some background behind it. Uh, we want you to explore, we want you to, to see what is out there. If not to identify, I might be interested in this, but also to identify, I don't want to do this.
We all realize that we're here for kids and if a kid's struggling in any way, shape, or form, I'm still their principal. Um, my teachers are still their teachers. Uh, we, we don't, we have this philosophy, I think, in Pillager, we don't give up on kids. Um, so I think that's one of the things that makes this kind of a family. Yeah, we're like a family. We have struggles, okay? And having struggles is not a bad thing. It prepares you for life. Um, life is, you know, in essence, a struggle. And to get through that, um, you learn how to deal with it and you learn how to pick each other up and grow as a team and move forward.
Nice job.
Yeah, really good job.
Any questions for Chad on the presentation? Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Superintendent's report.
Uh, I have a few items. Uh, first off, uh, Pillager School, schools will be honoring the Juneteenth holiday. Um, based on the new state law for state agencies, uh, we did not have to have a motion or anything like that. The MSBA just recommended that I put it in our superintendent report. So we are closed that day, uh, district office wise and employee wise. We will have daycare open, uh, because that's family center and it's run through them, so. Crisis management response team handle. So I put this on your, on your, uh, tables. Um, I went through and updated a lot of the, some of the information that we got back from the surveys. Um, about some steps and things that we should do, uh, from our little social media day off that we had back this year that, uh, some feedback we received on some steps that we could include in our policy. So I went in and updated some of those things, recommends from staff, some of the more information on how we uh, put out information to our parents and some of those steps. So I went in, updated that as of now. We'll probably take a look at this again as admin this fall and re-review that. So I just wanted to share that that has been updated based off of feedback we received from teachers and staff and things I heard from some parents. Um, enrollment update, I don't have one right now. I think it's kind of premature just because we got people coming and going. I'll give one to you in July and in August, once again, to see where we're at. Currently, we have about eighty, I think eighty-four kindergartners. Um, probably, I'm guessing by the time school starts will be over ninety, I'm hoping. Um, but, uh, that's where we're at right now for kindergarten. Um, we're going to do a survey of staff and families from the summer school that we're doing right now. Obviously, a lot of those dollars came from ESSR. ESSR, ESSR will be gone next year. So we're, uh, Ryan is gonna put together a survey that we can send out to staff. The big, one of the biggest things would be transportation that we're using. Um, and the camps, you know, how can we do that? If we do the camps, uh, along with summer school, if we don't provide transportation, what are the likely of those families coming? Um, so we can get some feedback to say, is it, I know a lot of good positives from, uh, having that all-day thing, all-day with camps and stuff. The other thing that we're gonna ask staff is, you know, what would it take for you to commit to working? Cause a couple of years prior, we had a tough time finding staff to work summer school. So we're gonna do some, some gathering of some information to see is there a way that we can continue to offer what we have or not? Um, just to, just to say, no, we're not gonna do it because the funding's gone. Uh, I'd like to try to do it somehow. So we'll see if, if we do the whole camp thing, will parents still come with, you know, if they have to bring them? So things like that. So we'll put that together. Um, admin team, uh, all of us are attending the model school conference in Orlando, June twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth. I'm excited about that. Um, there's sessions for all levels, uh, elementary, middle school, high school. A lot of schools coming present of things that they're doing, uh, that have worked really well, so we're excited to go to that. Um, AdSIS, we were approved through the AdSIS grants, um, and we also added some pieces to that, so we actually will be getting more. I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but we put a few more people in that AdSIS that count towards that we can get sixty percent back from the state, so we were approved for all that. Which in the long run, next year will help the, the budget, so some of those things will be putting into AdSIS, so we're excited about that. And the last thing I have is, I've been meaning to get you guys, your staff, pull the sled shirts. I keep forgetting. So if you haven't gotten one, I have various sizes here, so grab one for that for all of you. So, and we'll do that again next year for new staff and, uh, people as well, so. That's all I got. Let's see if there be any questions.
Any questions for Mike? Alright, anything from any other board members? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Anything for?
I'll make your motion.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, we can adjourn. Thank you.